Good afternoon, everybody. This is the advertised time and the advertised place for the Thursday, August 21st, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please stand up and join us in the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. We're trying out a new sound system today, so be patient. Hopefully, everything goes smoothly. If not, let us know. At this point, we do have one public hearing for Bluffs Drive Minor Subdivision, and I think Heather's going to tell us about that.
So, for the record, Heather Trochanowski, Planner for the Town of Riverhead. This is a public hearing for a minor subdivision application of Two Bluffs Drive, which seeks approval to subdivide an existing 3.5328 acre parcel into three residential lots, with Lot 1 having an area of 52,312 square feet, Lot 2 having an area of 45,323 square feet, and Lot 3 having an area of 56,254 square feet. Located at Two Bluffs Drive, Calverton, within the RA40 zoning use district, more particularly described as Suffolk County Tax Act Number 600-35-5-5.19. We did receive the affidavit of post and mailing and the receipts. We have the Design Professional here if the Board or members of the public have any questions.
Can we get that map up on the?
We have it on that screen. Justin, can we have the map on this screen, too?
Thank you.
Perfect.
How you doing?
Members of the Board, Jeff Butler, Professional Engineer, offices at 206 Lincoln Street, Riverhead, New York. Here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Tom McColl, want to thank the staff for the work they've done and helping us get through the application process and the comments that we've received back on this. And I'm here to address any questions you guys may have on the application as it sits
Anybody from the audience like to comment? Public hearing, so we can have people on Zoom chime in.
No hands raised.
If I may, the Board did have questions specifically about the proposed right-of-way and also the tanks on the site during the discussion. I had forwarded that synopsis over to Melissa Butler, and I'm sure she reiterated that to Jeff. Want to speak to that?
So, the proposed right-of-way, so the history of this parcel, Mr. McColl purchased it from Mr. Van de Wettering, which Mr. Van de Wettering owns the other, his family owns the other two parcels, residential parcels to the east, as well as the commercial property to the south. So, the right-of-way that you see to get to those two parcels was a courtesy that in the agreement to purchase the property from Mr. Van de Wettering, that the easement would be granted so that those other lots could have access to the back of them in the future if for any reason he needed to get back there to do any maintenance or do any construction back there. It was also put in, we originally thought it was filed, but it's not. It was just part of the deed when Mr. McColl bought the property, so it needs to be filed. But the other purpose it serves is when the subdivision was put in and that the, I believe the water line originally dead-ended at the cul-de-sac on Bluffs, but then an extension was put in, as you can see on the map, which ran east. And at that time, Mr. Van de Wettering put in two water services for those two lots. We don't think they're active. We've asked the Water Authority, and they haven't got back to us. But those are the two water meters that you see on the east side, and they're within that easement that we're generating and need to file, so that they're covered within the easement for utilities and access.
So, they're not being used by Van de Wettering?
We don't know if they're active yet or not, but they were certainly installed when that, we believe, when that 12-inch line was put into the north along the boundary of this property and the Bluff subdivision.
I remember there were some tanks and other equipment or whatever. You know, is that leaving the site?
Yeah, so the three tanks, which we tried to get to when the question was raised, we can't because it's just so overgrown. But we did do, we did get a drone and overfly them and ask Mr. Van de Wettering, and they were purchased from a winery for, so we don't know if they have wine or water in them, but one of the two.
No.
No fossil fuels.
Okay. They're not going to be removed?
They'll be removed.
Okay.
Yeah.
We thought they were propane at the time.
No propane, no?
But they are filled.
What's that?
They are filled.
We don't, we didn't, we haven't gotten to them to see if they have anything in them. We know that they're stainless steel, so we don't know, we don't, we know the material, we just don't know what's in them. It's either wine or water, so I'll let you know.
Recharge basin for the subdivision? Heather, will be, would they exist, anyone?
Well, the recharge basin is for the major subdivision. The minor subdivision, the lots will be maintaining their stormwater on-site, you know, when they go to build. And then I do believe that the common driveway, Drew had asked for a couple of things, Vinnie had asked for a couple of things, and they're going to design that, you know, as to maintain the stormwater and.
Is that going to be blacktop or?
I think they have an asphalt section on here.
Yeah, it will be asphalt. We have a, there was one comment, I don't know if, from the Fire Marshal, that we have to maintain within 150 feet of all structures that we're, we can get fire equipment in there. So, that will meet that specification according to Chapter 5 of the New York State Fire Code for whatever distance we need to do it. When we get to the development of lots, that'll be resolved.
Yeah, on the map, it's proposed asphalt common driveway, and it'll be designed to accommodate 82,000 pounds per the Fire Marshal comments.
Anything else, gentlemen? Nobody on Zoom?
Nobody with their hands raised.
All right.
Move, we close the public hearing.
Move this second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. De Niro?
Right.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I go right in. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. A few times.
Okay, we've got a couple of discussion items. Woodhull and Sound Avenue for a minor subdivision with match charters.
Just introduce yourselves to the record, please.
Hi, I'm Christine Malacena Woodhull. This is my family's property. Can't believe Judd 737 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, the applicant.
Dustin, you can just zoom out a little bit.
That's good. All right, so we have a two-lot minor subdivision at 506 Sound Shore Road. Pretty straightforward. We have one lot that is going to contain the existing structure, so there's a single-family residence and some accessory structures. Both lots will have access to the Long Island Sound. This is about, I'd say, right in the middle of Sound Shore Road. It's about a mile from the Sound Shore Road Pier Avenue intersection with a proposed single-family dwelling on Lot 2. Surrounding area is mainly residential, with the exception of the Northville Tank Farm, which is in the area. Moving through my staff report, this is type 2 action pursuant to secret, so no further environmental review is required. The property does have an existing CO for the residents, which was recently updated, if you noted in my report. It was written as a mobile home. It was always a modular home when they replaced the original mobile home, so that was corrected recently. Items of note are these two frame sheds, which are non-conforming locations, because it's within the front yard, accessory structures have to be within the rear. With this structure in a conforming location, but too close to the property line, and then this one, which is totally in the front. So, the applicant will either have to seek relief or relocate them. Well, you know, this board can't support relief from the zoning board. It'd be pretty challenging for them to locate it in the rear of the property if you know there's significant topo as you go to Long Island Sound to the beach. So, starting here, it drops about 30 feet to a flat area here.
Does it require any variances?
Not for the lots themselves, no. Just those, just those structures will either have to be moved or they'll need relief. There are, is an encroachment on the property, which is covered by an easement. It's for this driveway area and the frame shed from these lots up here. That's already been recorded. And there's also a little bit of encroachment from an earthen and RCA driveway for the property to the west, and I believe the owner's working to prevent people from coming down. It looks like this owner put some sort of like roadway down, but there's a do not enter sign, so they're working to rectify that. This does comply with the RA40 zoning use district, but there's not a dimensional chart on here, so we'll just need that on as a condition of approval. In terms of the recreational fee, it'll be $1,5000 recreational fee for the additional lot, not one where there's already residents. We did get comments from the water district. It's public water on the street with a hydrant to the east, right by my finger here, so they'll need to pay all fees from the water district to connect. I did get a memo back from Drew on the 15th. He had no comments on this. Nothing back from the Fire Marshal, Fire District, or the Planning Commission yet. Had to go to the Planning Commission because they're within 500 feet of the sound. They do have an application in with the Health Department. It's incomplete, but obviously, we'll need Health Department approval before you guys can approve. And then moving to the DEC, because they're within their jurisdiction, they did get a permit from DEC, which was issued already for the subdivision, noting that they're within three miles of occurrence of the Northern Longyear Bat, so they all have a covenant that they can't clear unless they're within that bat window, which is between March 1st and November 30th.
Can we move the public hearing at the same time as you're applying with Health Department?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's what typically happens anyway.
Just one question.
Yes.
The no cutting trees between March 1st and November 30th, will they continue on building also?
Yeah, they have to. So, you have to comply with, that's the Northern Longyear Bat window.
You're not going to work in the wintertime?
Correct.
Good luck.
It's a stiff burden to me, but we, it's not atypical for the town. Pretty much, there's a Northern Longyear Bat within three miles of everyone. So, my recommendation is that we have a resolution to classify this as a type 2 and schedule a hearing for September 18th, which is an afternoon meeting. I didn't know if the Board had any questions before.
Just one question over here on the gravel driveway, which extends onto the property?
Over here?
Yeah.
Or this one? Which?
Which, it's from the asphalt driveway on the.
Yeah, that one.
Yep.
Now, that seems to be on the property?
It is. So, that's captured by an encroachment, and so they already recorded an easement to the benefit of the neighbors. That's their driveway, and there's actually a pretty significant grade difference here as well. It's about 20 feet from the low spot down here to where that driveway is. It's like straight up.
Retaining walls.
Yeah, there's a big retaining wall. If you guys have any question for the owner or for the company?
There's also a tool shed.
Yep, so that's captured by the easement, too.
That's it? Okay.
That's the neighbor's tool shed.
Okay.
Good guess. Good.
Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere. Item number two is JPD Calverton 4195 Middle Country Road in Calverton, if the Board's familiar. This is where I had, nobody from the applicant, they couldn't be here today. No, I've been corresponding with them.
They both had scheduling conflicts, but we're not taking an action today. This is more of an update to bring everyone up to speed with the changes that have been made since you originally reviewed this back in 2023. This is where Neptune Feeds is located, south side of Middle Country Road in Calverton. We received this application, I believe, in 2023. So, what happened is under, we started reviewing, we retained LKMA to review their traffic report on this because they're building a 74,650 square foot new industrial building with multi-tenants in addition to their existing 139,000 building with outdoor storage now. We retained LKMA, we moved offices, we had, there was a retirement of LKMA, and then in January of 2024, this application was captured by the Calverton Industrial Moratorium. So, that went on for a year, more or less. New zoning for this property was, the property was rezoned from industrial C to Calverton Industrial. So, what I highlighted for you in the staff report that it distributed was essentially those changes. It complies to the, all the dimensional regulations of the Calverton Industrial Zone, with the exception, they'll need to show the 50-foot transition yard in the front, but really, just to pick up the review again, no action other than to continue the traffic review. So, when you last saw this, these two outdoor storage areas weren't included because it wasn't permitted in the old zoning use district. They are now allowed. So, in the traffic study, we're just including, asking that they're included, and they know what exactly they're going to use them for, to see if it has a traffic impact.
Are they planning on any improvements to the parking lot?
I would love to see it, because if you see in my report, it's not in great condition. So, I can definitely transmit that to the applicant, that their existing parking area, you know, there's weeds growing through everywhere, there's a lot of truck bodies. I'm hoping that's where the outdoor storage areas is, where they'll put a lot of that stuff, because they'll have to be screened in within the fence, other than that.
See if we can edge them along. Matt, as we talked, I'm going to leave my comments until we have someone here from the company that's doing the work. It's just, like Ed said, the place, it just looks terrible. And any type, a lot of improvements have to be, you know, for the next 25 or 30 years.
Yeah, and that's understood. It's a new owner, I think even since the last time this board's reviewed it. So, if you're familiar now, they do access via two curb cuts. The eastern curb cut's going to be abandoned, so they'll only be able to access off the western curb cut. They're proposing a nice planted berm here, not to excuse the condition of the site because it is an industrial site, but you can't really see it from the road. Very quiet neighbors to the east and to the south. It's a solar farm. This is a sod farm to the west, but there is a requirement that along the entire property line, they have to have a 10-foot planted buffer with evergreen, so they'll have to show that in the future if there's anybody on this side. You won't really be able to see it, but I agree, they have a little bit of cleanup to do.
Do you get any answer to the storage problem or the storage question?
I haven't got any specifics yet, but it's an open question I posed, so what exactly they're going to use it for.
Just doesn't make any sense. They probably go store things there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they got drainage and everything set up for it. And the other question I had was the public water.
So, was there, is, this property is partially within the water district. The line is more or less like here. There's water in the street, so they're going to bring water down to the new building. This is already served by an existing service. They'll have to extend the district, as far as I'm aware, typically to encompass the entire property.
But they don't show it on the drawing.
No, I don't think they do. We'll call it out. They show the existing, not on this sheet, but it goes here.
To where they, to where they remove the shed?
Yep. Okay, so we're keeping on plugging along with traffic review. All right? No action on that one today.
Item number three, Thomas Anderson Minor Subdivision. Heather, come on up. Hi, Mr. Cuddy.
Hello, it's Cuddy. 45 Griffin Avenue, Riverhead, for the Andersons.
So, both this application, Thomas Anderson, and then the subsequent application of Richard Anderson Minor Subdivision are inherently tied together. They're two separate parcels, but the same family owns them. And the purpose of the applications being reviewed concurrently is because the property owners want to sell the development rights to the county in order, I don't know if you read the letter of intent that was submitted, in order to get an equal share. The brother to the south, who's Richard Anderson, is subdividing his into three lots, and then Thomas Anderson is subdividing his into two lots, again, with the intent to sell all the larger pieces to the county. Just to get into the nitty-gritty, the northern parcel, which is the Thomas Anderson parcel, is Suffolk County Tax Act Number 600-64-1-57. The lot is 25.711 acres, and they're proposing to subdivide it into two lots, one being 21.711 acres, the acquisition parcel, and then the smaller one to be a four-acre retained parcel, possibly to build a house on in the future. It's located wholly within the APZ zoning use district, about 1,000 feet south of the Reeves-Roanoke Avenue intersection, located on the east side of Roanoke Avenue. So, I did refer this to the Ag Advisory Committee. They approved the application as submitted at their meeting held on August 11th. As far as access is concerned, obviously, no new accesses are proposed. Currently, I believe the Thomas Anderson Farm parcel is accessed via this, it's a right-of-way on the map, and it's actually a flag that's part of the nine Tyler Drive Court parcel, which is the Vineyard Golf parcel. And it's interesting, it's been in that configuration for quite some time, so I don't know if this original right-of-way was parcellized and then merged with this lot. I'm not 100% sure, but in reviewing the title reports, both of these farm lots have rights to this for access, but it looks like this accesses for the Thomas Anderson parcel, and then the Richard Anderson parcel, which is to the south, has multiple farm roads to access it off of Roanoke Avenue. I did make the general referrals, Water District Fire Marshal, our Consulting Engineer, Highway Department. I have yet to receive comments back from them, but that doesn't stop this board from scheduling a public hearing as it's a type 2 action pursuant to secret. So, just to sort of dovetail if it's all right if we go into the Richard Anderson map.
The road that's from the Delacour's, is that going to impede any of the counties looking at the properties?
No. The county is happy with this proposal that we're trying to get through, but no, they've looked at it, and they're fine with it.
So, if you don't mind, well, this is the Richard Anderson Minor Subdivision. So, this is the parcel to the south of the right-of-way on the map. It's more particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Act Number 600-64-1-7.1, and this parcel is 66.996 acres, and they're proposing to subdivide this into three lots. Lot 1 would be 20.639 acres, an acquisition parcel. Lot 2, 42.357 acres, also an acquisition parcel. And Lot 3, which is four acres, would be the retained parcel again for potential, you know, residential development in the future. The main difference between this lot and the Thomas Anderson lot is it is partially split-zoned. The southern portion of it here that goes to Joyce Drive is RA40, and then the remainder is APZ. Again, this is a type 2 action pursuant to secret. The Ag Advisory also reviewed this at their August 11th meeting and approved the application as proposed.
Why is this a three-lot subdivision?
So, as I stated earlier.
Why couldn't they just get rid of this line of one large parcel?
As I stated earlier, the intent is that the two brothers would like to split equally whatever is made from the purchase of development rights. Sure, Mr. Cuddy, sorry.
The Andersons, like many of us, are getting older, and they were making an estate plan. What they did is they took 92 acres, which is back-to-back in this area, and each one is going to get 42, and they could have saved four. When I say 42, 42 is going to be sold to the county, so that's 84 acres. The other eight acres, they're each splitting for cutout pieces, put a house or something. That's all they're really doing. They're just saying, we each want to own part of this. We now own it together. We want to separate it.
Yeah, so if it. Lot 2, as it's shown here, is actually for acquisition.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you look at.
Exchange them. They're just trying to break them up, and that's really what's happening.
If you look at the map side by side, the Lot 2 of the Thomas Anderson plus the area of Lot 1 of the Richard Anderson essentially equates to the total area of Lot 2. So, because they're divided by that flag, they had to break it up this way, but it's my understanding that the county is currently reviewing these maps and is happy.
They're looking exactly at the same thing. Done the same.
So, if the Board has any other questions, I mean, it's really, you know, we're classifying, this is a type 2 action pursuant to secret for both subdivisions, and then scheduling public hearings for both on September 18th, which is a 3:00 meeting.
Yeah, we have resolutions on tonight, so. Thank you. Thank you. Item number five, Summerwind Farm, major subdivision. Be quiet for a minute.
Allison Lapointe for Tillman Allen Adler Hyman for the applicant.
Yeah, Andrew Holtenberg with ALS Engineering for the applicant.
Thank you. One more shortly. Our traffic engineer, Rebecca Goldberg, is en route, so please, she makes it in time.
Did you receive the reports?
Yes.
All right. So, this is a continued discussion for the Summerwind Farms application. Just a brief sort of history of the project thus far. Back in February, the Planning Board approved a 19-lot as-of-right yield map for the subject property. It's about 30 acres in size, so there was an as-of-right yield of 19 lots. In March of 25, the Planning Board rejected the three sketch plans that were initially submitted and instructed the applicant to submit three revised sketch plans. The applicant did so, and then in July, we retained LKMA to review the three proposed sketches as well as a engineer, you know, a traffic safety engineering assessment that was prepared by IMAG, which was formerly Cameron Engineering. We did receive a review memo from LKMA, so I'll kind of just go over the three revised sketch plans for the Board. So, what they're calling sketch plans 4, 5, and 6. So, sketch plan, the sketch plans generally follow the same sort of layout and design as the initial sketch plan that was rejected. The main difference was in the layout of and location of the driveway for the four lots that are located on the southern side of the property. This proposed road remained the same. That was in some of the old initial sketches, as well as the lots that come off the end of Sunup Trail, which are two lots. So, sketch.
Is that going to be an entrance for the, or Summit Trail?
Well, so, Sunup Trail at the terminus of the cul-de-sac, there will be two new lots located off the end of that. These lots would take access off of this proposed roadway with the cul-de-sac here, and then there would be a private driveway that would be proposed to serve lots 1 through 4. So, Sketch Plan 4 has the proposed private driveway coming off of the western side of the property on Conic Bay Boulevard. That would serve lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, and it's presumed that the development area for Lot Number 16, this area, it would be open space and ag reserve. There is a right-of-way on the eastern side of the property. Sketch Plan 4 would have access to the development area from that private, from that right-of-way. Sketch Plan 5, I had to sort of look very closely to. the property on Beconic Bay Boulevard. That would serve lots one, two, three, and four, and it's presumed that the development area for lot number 16, this area, it would be open space in ag reserve. There is a right-of-way on the eastern side of the property. Sketch Plan Four would have access to the development area from that private, from that right-of-way. Sketch Plan Five, I had to sort of look very closely to see what the difference for this one is. The difference for this is that the development area for lot 16 would take access off of this proposed common driveway. Again, that same location on the western edge of the property along Beconic Bay Boulevard. Sketch Plan Six. Sketch Plan Six took the private driveway, and instead of locating it on the western portion of the property, it comes around to the south and comes out at the southeast corner of the property on Beconic Bay Boulevard. So the summation of LKMA's review of the property, so they did a site visit, they looked at the three sketch plans, they reviewed the engineering assessment that was prepared by IMAG that was submitted by the applicant. Their recommended driveway option would be option number six. They noted that option six, the configuration depicted in Sketch Plan Six locates the driveway at the southeast corner of the subject property. Per the applicant, the driveway location provides 605 feet of site distance to the left, meaning to the east, and 310 feet of site distance to the right. Traffic traveling southbound around Beconic Bay Boulevard curve is likely to be traveling slower compared to the straightaway section of the roadway. The applicant expects the prevailing speed of vehicles traveling on the curve to be about 35 miles an hour. Again, I believe that was based on field observations by the applicant's engineering professional. It states it has a speed of 35 miles per hour. Required amount of intersections, site distance changes to 390 feet. As such, the required site distance can be attained with less vegetative clearing. So there is a small row of trees down here on the south side of the property. The original proposal did propose to clear a site triangle out of this significant wooded buffer over here, but they're saying that the site distance can be accomplished with minimal clearing over here towards the southeast corner. They did note that there is a 20 mile per hour advisory speed around the corner, which, you know, is supposed to warn people to kind of slow down a little bit. So the end result is LKMA's recommended driveway location would be option number six. Again, you know, from the inception of this project, I've, you know, I've appreciated the, you know, layout of this subdivision. It serves many functions, it preserves the, you know, what I consider the real, the vista of the farm field over here to the south. The only real view shed that you have from it is down on the south side of Beconic, on the south side of the property from Beconic Bay Boulevard looking north. There is the preservation component back here. It serves to, to the greatest extent, practical, keep that vista for the residents on Foxchaser Place. There would be, you know, the, these two lots on Foxchaser would have new residences in there, but any other configuration of this subdivision would be much more impactful to neighboring residences. So from that end, I can respect the layout and the considerations to it. So we're here before the board to present the three sketch plans, present the applicant's engineering assessment, as well as our retained consultant's review of it. Again, I, you know, I would support Sketch Plan Number Six. We will, obviously, if the board prefer, if the board is in agreement, they would move forward with the preliminary plat, they would have to do drainage designs at that point. My only kind of question or concern would be, you know, so this roadway meets town standards and would be potentially offered for dedication to the town. There is a recharge basin here that would capture the stormwater runoff from that roadway, being that this would be a private common driveway. There is a note down here that says driveway drainage area. I'm just a little hesitant to have what essentially would be a privately maintained drainage area right next to the town roadway. I don't know if there could be, when they actually get into the engineering, if that could either be managed within the road itself, or if they could address the drainage. You know, I just don't know if that would be necessarily appropriate to have a privately maintained drainage area.
Is it supposed to be paved?
Yeah, so I mean, that would be a 26-foot-wide asphalt driveway with turnaround. That's required based on the length of the road in order to meet fire codes for a emergency vehicle to be able to get in there and turn around. And also, if there's any types of, you know, Amazon, any type of deliveries that are taking place, it gives a vehicle a place to turn around. And yes, that would be a private driveway.
Is the lot 16, is there a specific reason why it's located that far in, rather than, let's say, closer to the other lots on Beconic Bay?
Well, I mean, so lot 16, you mean you're referring to the development area?
Yeah.
In terms of why that was selected, I would defer to the applicant if they could, you know, speak to that. I mean, it would make sense to sort of have a, if that's going to be the farmhouse, you know, you want to kind of have it tucked back, rather than right in the middle of your farm field.
Yeah, or just put it right here on the entrance with lot 16.
By me, I believe that was in part to try to maintain as much of the agricultural vista from, from the roadway, so that way if the development in that location was further back, it would allow it to look continuous, continue to be able to observe the, the farmland from that location. There is a prospective purchaser for that lot, which is looking to continue the farmland use on that lot, as well as for lot 15, that is the same situation. There is a prospective purchaser for that lot who is also looking to maintain the farmland use on lot 15. And in terms of the drainage, certainly we're open to making sure that everything is engineered to the town's specifications and requirements.
Young lady, you got here a little late, can you tell us who you are?
Oh, of course. My name is Rebecca Goldberg, I'm the transportation engineer that prepared the letter report that was submitted to the board in June.
Thank you.
And here for questions if needed.
Greg, I kind of agree with you. On Exhibit Four and Five, going out west on a boulevard, I've been there, the elevation is probably three to four feet, the road is lower than, so it would be a tremendous amount of work just getting it down to that level. I like the idea of going all the way to the east where it's relatively flat, and there is a somewhat of a road opening as it is. If that's going to be blacked out, will it be Belgian block, and can the dry wells maintain, you know, the water, run the rain runoff instead of, you know, recharge basin? Is there a limit on how far or the amount of area?
I mean, so that's really an engineering question, you know, that would have to do with just the amount of impervious surface, the grade of the property, you know, what the required capacity for a-
You're going to be required to have a SWIP, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, and, I mean, it's without question, I mean, that's a, that's a standard, you know, and every subdivision, every development has to maintain their own stormwater. I mean, in terms of whether it's going to be Belgian block or curbing, I mean, that's really up to, you know, the developer for a private, for what would be a private driveway. You know, the, the town road would have to beat the town standards in terms of paving width, curbing specifications, recharge basin standards. This would have to be designed to the town of Riverhead road drainage standards, but we don't really have a common standard for a common driveway.
It's still a difficult lot because of the S-turns, but maybe as we get further along in the process, we could consider things like blind driveway signs, you know, other things to mediate the S-turns there.
Come, if I could just for a moment, the applicant has worked pretty extensively with the neighbors directly to the east. I believe some letters were submitted to the planning department. It's my understanding that the neighbors to the east prefer option number five. That said, my clients are prepared to move forward with whichever one the town feels is the best option. I understand from, in terms of what the traffic engineer came back with from your engineer. I believe, and again, I'm going to speak at a turn, I believe some of those neighbors may be behind us who may be speaking at the public speaking section, and they can correct me if I'm incorrect. I think there were some concerns about having access in the location, having trucks and vehicles increasing the traffic in what is now their farmland backyard, which I thoroughly understand, but again, if it comes down to it is the safety considerations that will control the day, again, we're prepared to move forward with whichever plan the board deems is necessary. The applicant has also been working with the DEC and with SHIPO. SHIPO has given an approval for the site. There's one little location up in this corner, which will be a do-not-disturb location, which is what gave them their, the comfort level with, with this application. Has also worked with the Farm Bureau, again, making sure that the vast majority of the two larger lots will be maintained for future agriculture. And again, respectfully request that you make a decision, so that way we can move into engineering and answer some of your larger questions.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Before we move, I do just want to bring up, as Ms. Lapointe pointed out, we did receive some correspondence from the neighbors, which was forwarded to the board. There was a question, so this, I believe it's a 16-foot right-of-way that's located on the east side of the property. There's actually mention of that right-of-way in some of these neighboring property owners' deeds on Foxchaser Place. Right now, the, the plan calls that to be abandoned, but rather than sort of open up a can of worms in abandoning something that other property owners may have a right to, I personally would not have an issue if that right-of-way was maintained and was not abandoned.
Again, we don't, I don't have the information as to, to whom they service on their deeds, but again, we'll follow the guidance of the board, and we can't abandon something that can't be abandoned.
True. Okay, good. Good luck, thank you.
We, we good, just to get some, are we good with Sketch Plan Six based on the, you know, the traffic safety removal?
We'll reach out individually to you and text mail and let you know, because it's illegal to take a straw poll, so.
Okay.
We'll reach out individually, and whatever number they want, the majority will. Is that okay?
Certainly. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, at this point, can we have comments on resolutions, please?
I do just have one amendment that I just want to propose to the board, bring to their attention before we vote. It's on the 940 to 946 West Main Street application. I received a letter from design professional Martin Senlooski just before the meeting. He requested two changes. The first change was to page five, condition number one. This is Resolution 2025-084. So right now, the resolution says that no site work shall begin nor shall building permits be issued until a planning board resolution granting final site plan approval is adopted. He requested just clarification language that would re, that no site work shall begin nor building permits be issued for this proposed site development and proposed buildings until a planning board resolution granting final site plan approval is adopted. The reason for this request was to just sort of clarify that if they wanted to use the existing building under a permitted use, that a building permit could be issued. Again, that was never the intent of the resolution, but I have no objection to that clarification. And then they did request a change to the duration of the preliminary approval, which right now, our preliminary site plan approval code is valid for one year, and it has the possibility of two six-month extensions to be granted. He requested three years, which is not permitted under the code. So the resolution, as it stays, will be valid for one year. The applicant, as I stated, can request those two six-months extensions, which would essentially bring their preliminary approval to be valid for two years, which would allow them to address all of the necessary conditions regarding DOT, sewer, water, DEC, and the like.
Eric, do you guys have any, I know number two, we can't help, but number one, you have any problem law-wise with that? The change in the first resolution, Greg?
We're changing the resolution.
So it would, so it would just, right now, it just says, final condition, it says that no site work shall begin nor shall building permits be issued until a planning board resolution granting final site plan approval is adopted. They would just like to add the language that no site work shall begin nor shall building permits be issued for this proposed site development and proposed buildings. Again, the intent of a resolution is not to stop someone from filing a building permit for the existing building. Again, I just, I don't see that it moves the needle in one direction or another.
The existing building is part of the current site plan?
No, the existing building is going to be demolished as a result of the site plan. So they're saying that-
They wouldn't be able to demolish the building?
What about you?
They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to, they just want to clarify that they wouldn't be able to pull a permit for the site work under this site plan or the proposed building, so that in the two years, you know, that they may take to get the necessary permits and approvals from outside agencies, if they wanted to use that existing building for a proposed, you know, permitted use under the zoning, that's fine. All right.
And because, are they covered under any change in code, code changes or anything else within those two years?
No, so, so, that would be a, I mean, if, we've treated other sites that have had a preliminary approval, we have treated them, you know, sort of extended that, that preliminary approval sort of keeps them within the limits of that site plan.
For those two years.
Yeah. I mean, if, if in the two years that they haven't received the necessary approvals and they haven't gotten that final approval, that's a different story, but, you know, I don't think we've ever taken the position that we're going to change the zoning on someone after they've received a preliminary approval and then subject them to those changes.
But after those two years, it could be possible.
I mean, in theory, after the approval lapses, if there was a code change in the meantime, yes, they wouldn't be that subject to it, but if they're within their timeframes, granting them the preliminary approval, that's how we've treated those applications.
Actually, that was my mistake. I thought, I just got that mixed up with final site plan, because that allows three years.
Yeah.
And when I read it, I was just thinking the, the three years that way, so that was just an incorrect request. And the other one is just so that they have the existing buildings, that they can continue to use them, pull permits for the existing buildings for permitted uses while we're going through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, anybody else?
One second.
Using that existing building, it's just, if it makes them feel more comfortable, I am-
Yeah, the proposed, the proposed amendment.
Good. Other comments, anybody? All righty. Gentlemen, can we do the resolutions, please?
All right, I'll move Resolution 2025-082, Woodhull at Sound Shore, the minor subdivision.
Second.
Public hearing, Mr. Zonicki?
A public hearing, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro? Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll move Resolution 23-25-084, grants preliminary approval and site plan for nine, nine forty, nine-
We're on number two, Joe.
I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead, let somebody else do it.
Resolution three, Joe. Two. Resolution number 2025-083, Gouda LLC, resolution granting final approval for the site plan application entitled Gouda LLC, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Okay, I'll go, I'll do 084 now, which is 940-946 West Main Street Site Redevelopment for preliminary approval.
Second.
And that will just be as amended.
Okay, moved in second, as amended. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes, as amended.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes, as amended.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution 2025-085, Silverback Holdings LLC, minor subdivision, resulting, resolution granting an extension of approval for a two-lot minor subdivision.
Second.
Moved in second. Mrs. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move Resolution 2025-086, Thomas Anderson minus subdivision, to schedule a public hearing, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro? Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move Resolution 2025-086, Thomas Anderson minus subdivision.
This is Richard Anderson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Richard Anderson. Let's keep Mr. Anderson's up. Excuse me. Richard Anderson minus subdivision, to classify as type-two and schedule a public hearing on the minor subdivision for Richard minor, Richard Anderson minor.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move Resolution number 2025-088, Cathy Lane, major subdivision, resolution granting an extension of approval for a 10-lot major subdivision, a major residential subdivision, originally approved by the planning board, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Okay, at this portion of time, we can have public comment on all matters. Okay, Chris? Can we get the minutes moved, please? Can we get the minutes moved, please?
I'll move the minutes of Riverhead Town Board, July 17th, 2025.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Greg, no secret actions tonight?
No, sir.
Other business? Correspondents?
Aside from the letters?
Aside from the letters that were forwarded regarding the Summerwind subdivision.
Okay, our next meeting date is Thursday, September 4th, at 6:00, right here. Hope to see everybody there. Motion in pause.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.